Good evening. I would like to call this Planning Commission meeting of March 26 to order. Before we do roll, I do want to make note that we are not going to have a teleconference this evening. Commissioner Eric Alderetti was going to join us from a remote spot, but he's not doing so. So, Madam Secretary, if you could take roll.
Yes. Commissioner Becerra.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Commissioner Alderetti. Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Chair Yehav Korn.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Phil, would you lead us?
All right, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice law.
Thank you, Phil. We are now open for public comments. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? If you filled out a card, please come forward. If you haven't filled out a card, please do so with the secretary, and then you can speak. I have one card this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Dale Helvick, Park Santiago, here to talk about the 2525 main residential development that's on the books to be developed. Again, we're opposed to the project. One of you guys mentioned something about a work study that might be able to be done so we can get the developer, city, and the community together to come up with maybe alternative uses of this project. He has posted something on a website after almost four months of promising it, so we do have that to go by. It's still extremely high-density, five-story structure. We don't feel that that's appropriate for that area. And he has actually met with some of the neighbors recently, and it was interesting to note that when the subject of parking and traffic was brought up by the neighbors that lived right on the adjoining property line with the development, he was pretty nonchalant about it. One was, he said, "Well, millennials don't use as many cars as other people do." Well, he didn't even realize that he was talking to three households there, two of which were millennials, and they both had two cars apiece, you know? And he said, "You know, we're millennials. We have two cars. There isn't rapid transit around here that's reliable to get us from our job to home." So, that was kind of interesting. The other one was on traffic, and his response to that was, "That's the city's problem. I'm not going to talk about that." So, I hope when it comes time, you make it his problem, and traffic will be a problem if the project goes in as designed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Does anyone else from the public have a non-agenda item that they'd like to talk about this evening? Hearing none. Public comments is closed. We'll go to the consent calendar. Do any members have any corrections to the minutes or items that they wish to pull for discussion or abstain on?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Yes, on item number two, conditional use permit number 2018-01 regarding the charter school. The motion was not to adopt a resolution to deny. The motion was to approve, so the votes are reversed. So, in other words, you made the motion to approve the conditional use permit, and Ms. Contreras Leo, second. So, I just want to make the correction. It wasn't to deny. It was to approve, and then the votes were, the nays were Becerra, McLaughlin, Mendoza, and Marino, and the yeses were Contreras Leo and Nguyen. So, it's just reversed.
Okay.
If that did not pass, then they would have to take another, there would have to be another vote to actually deny it, but legal has drafted a resolution to deny the...
Okay, so in written, it's different than the motion that was made on the floor.
Right, so it was a denial of the CUP because of the traffic concerns.
Okay, so that's the way we wrote it at the end, even though the motion was approved. Okay, and then also, the comments for the meeting dates, the next meeting, it says Monday, March 12th. It's March 26th, so just those two days.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to approve the amended?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the amended minutes for the meeting of March 12th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Phil, a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Six-zero with Eric Alderetti absent. Second item on the consent calendar would be to excuse the absence of Eric Alderetti for this evening. Do we have a motion?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero with Eric Alderetti absent. Moving on to the business calendar. We will now move to the business calendar. Please be advised that the actions of the Planning Commission shall become effective on the day following the regularly scheduled city council meeting after the 10-day appeal period, unless, if allowed, the San Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council, and a copy is sent to the Planning Department within 10 days of the date of the commission's actions, or unless set for public hearing by city council. An appeal from a decision or requirement of the Planning Commission shall be made by any interested party, individual, or group. Now is the time we'd like to move on to item number one, conditional use permit number 2018-05 to allow after-hours operation at the existing 7-Eleven store located at 2112 South Main Street. Do the Commissioners have anything to disclose at this point in time? Hearing none. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning Commissioners, good evening. This item is requested by 7-Eleven, who currently operates this location, to extend their hours of operation to 24 hours. And project description here. Currently, they're open from 5:00 a.m. until midnight. They are looking to go full 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So, full operations is what you find in the majority of 7-Elevens. They're not proposing any type of improvements to the site whatsoever, so there's no new construction, there's no improvements either inside or outside proposed on the site as well. So, it's purely just a request to extend their hours of operation. Here's an aerial map here of the location. It's a commercial center located at the southwest corner of Main and St. Gertrude. There's two buildings on the site there that were built in the early 80s. This site was occupied by a variety of market uses. Originally, it was a 7-Eleven, actually, back when it first opened up, then transitioned into a Circle K, a Mr. M's, and then 20, end of 2013, 7-Eleven came back in and applied for a CUP to sell, to brand new this location, which was granted. And so, what you have here is, they're located in the building there on the bottom, and I'll show you the next site plan here in a moment. Couple of site photos of the site here, and 7-Eleven's right there. It's at the end cap, around 3,000 square feet is what they occupy. And again, they've been there since 2014. Approvals for the CUP in 2013, then operated in 2014. Now, prior to them applying for this, they were only allowed to operate between midnight and 5:00 a.m. because that's what the zoning restricted them to. They're in a CSM zoning, and we did not change hours of operation in those zones. In our other commercial zones, we allowed 24-hour operations for markets with the CUP, but CSM, we never did. This body in late last year, and the city council earlier this year approved some code cleanups that we did. One of them was to amend the CSM zone to allow people who operate a business, retail business, to apply for a CUP, and that's why they're here today, because now they have the avenue to apply. Here's the site plan. It's a little bit turned because of length, but north is to the right, and they're located in Building 2, and they're in that little area there that's marked off in red. Surrounding properties include commercial to the north, south, and east, and just to the west, on the other side of that, Shop C, and to the above, which is to the left of the west of Building 1, you have single-family residential, which is Memorial Park Neighborhood So, we took a look at the request here. Again, they need a CUP, which means they can apply for a CUP, and usually will approve them if they submit the conditions of approval. And so, some of the analysis that we did there, we took a look at what they've operated in the past. Police ran some stats for them for the last five years, and then last recent year, and found that crime is trending down at this location. Them specifically, 7-Eleven, weren't causing the nuisance to the site, to the community. So, they've been operating in compliance with the CUP and the conditions. Both myself and Officer McGovern went out to the site about two weeks ago and walked the site and made sure they were complying with the conditions back in the 2013 CUP, which they are. Again, this is a chance to provide another amenity to the area there. Operating after-hours is very limited ability for the people to stop by and pick up some groceries or something to eat or drink, not alcohol, but something to consume after hours. This is another opportunity to provide that service in the area. Project is consistent with our goals and objectives of the general plan, I mean several of the goals and objectives that we have identified in our element there. And then, we have conditions of approval that have been incorporated into the project, and we feel that those conditions will adequately mitigate any potential concerns that may arise by this operating, this operating after-hours. Again, they've been a good operator for five years. We're confident they'll continue to operate per their conditions of approval, and staff are recommending that the Planning Commission approve the CUP as recommended and as conditioned. Thank you.
Do any Commissioners have a question? Staff, Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the proposed conditions of approval, number three states that the applicant shall remove any unpermitted outdoor vending machines. So, which vending machines does the applicant have that are outdoors that are not permitted?
There is none at this location. That's also there to protect us from, in the future, if they put an outdoor vending machine, they have to make sure that they can't do it essentially, to protect them in the future from putting any in.
And just out of curiosity, so if they wanted to put something in, what is the process to get them permitted?
We have a provision in our code that doesn't apply for a land use certificate.
Through staff, then?
Through staff level review, yes.
Okay. And then, police condition number 11 says that the conditional use permit shall be reviewed at 90 days, six months, one year, and then annually thereafter by PD. Is that a new condition that's being instituted, or is that something that has been used before? Because I just don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, that's been used before by, this is similar conditions of another after-hours we approved about two years ago, and the police will just go by and do a check, internal check. It's not to come back to the Planning Commission.
Right.
It's just to give them a reminder to go out there and just take a look, make sure they're operating in compliance with the conditions, and if they're not, we'll try to handle it administratively, and if they still don't comply, then we have the ability to come back to you and either put more conditions or start the revocation process.
But it's not something that we're going to see on every CUP with alcohol?
No, this is mainly for after-hours. We put those in there.
Just for after-hours?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the staff report indicates that the president of Memorial Park Neighborhood Association had expressed in a phone conversation that there were concerns with the business operating late at night and early in the morning. Can you elaborate on what some of those concerns were?
Yes, when I spoke with them about a week and a half ago, the concerns were mainly about loitering, the potential for loitering, and somebody would go in there at 2:00 a.m. and sit in the car and park outside, hang out. So, I spoke with them. We had a conversation. I kind of addressed his concerns, saying we have these conditions, we have no loitering signs around the property, police has the ability to go out there and enforce it. The applicant also spoke to him a couple of times most recently, as of Friday, and they can fill you in the most latest conversation, but we addressed the concerns of the neighborhood back at that time. So, it was mainly a loitering issue. I'm sure there's nobody hanging around, causing a nuisance that would create some kind of noise impact on the neighborhood after hours.
Okay, and then, so, does the shopping center have a security guard that's available?
They do not.
They do not? So, the signs are kind of the...
The signs are just in case someone's loitering, they can call the police, the police can come out there and do something about it.
Okay. And my last question is, so with the Planning Commission, we adopt resolutions, not the staff report.
Correct.
And when I was looking at Planning Division Condition 1, it talks about all the improvements, conditions, requirements contained within the staff report versus the resolution. So, it's saying that they must conform to the staff report, but then that kind of keeps it at a distance. So, I just want to know, as far as the resolution's written, is staff comfortable with the conditions that are included in just the resolution as a standalone?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And the one thing about the staff report, it also includes some of the exhibits that we can also go back and refer to, like the site plan. They do something different with the site plan. We can say, "Hey, you don't comply with the site plan."
We just don't attach that to the resolution, then?
We usually don't, no.
This section for the resolution refers to the staff report.
Right.
Okay, but isn't that kind of just encumbrance? I mean, why not just have it in one succinct document versus go here, then there, and then over there?
We end up giving the applicant the entire packet, the report and the resolution, so that they get the whole.
So, when we talk about in the, in the conditions that the applicant's going to have this on hand, he's going to have the staff report, the plans, and the resolution?
Yes, and we're actually going to be implementing something very shortly. They have to sign a document, say as they got them and agreed to the conditions, and we'll have them available at all times, so we can go to the site and ask them, "Hey, I need to see your conditions."
Okay.
So, it's make sure that they know what they have to continue to comply with.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Patricia?
Phil, you took three of my questions. It's been 19 months since I've been on the commission. I have never seen the police reporting districts. So, in this report, you have the police reporting grids versus the police reporting districts. Can you please tell me what the difference is and why it's mentioned in this one and not in other previous reports that I've seen?
They're the same, but they are technically reporting districts is what they call them.
Okay.
But they're also in a grid map, so I can see why people think it's a grid.
Right, so is it like, is the grid bigger than the police reporting grid?
The one and the same. District, grid, area, it's all the same, police reporting, zones.
Because when you write it in the analysis, it says, "In Grid 108, six out of the 30 reports." And then, the reporting district 122, it's 92 out of 102 police-related incidents. So, to me, those are like, you know, different numbers, so I want to understand that a little more. Where it says, "Police Reporting District 122," it's 92 out of 102 police-related incidents. To me, that's different than six out of 30 reports in Grid 108. So, I just want to understand that a little more.
I lost track of your, the question, but again, they're the same. Grid, district, it's all the same thing. And sometimes, instead of saying district, 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 18 times the report, we kind of change terminology a little bit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's the same boundaries.
Same boundaries.
Same boundaries.
And my other question is, in regards to the cameras, it says that the cameras must be inside. Is there any cameras outside? And I know there's cameras throughout the city, but is there any cameras outside?
There is, there is.
Okay.
Yep, and there's several inside. They're all operational. That was one of the conditions we checked on.
Okay, thank you.
Another question.
Ken?
Under the current CUP, the applicant allowed to stay holding-type 20 ABC license and operate from 5:00 a.m. to midnight. So, the new proposed, the CUP that would, 24 hours, so is that mean the alcohol would be sold throughout the 24-hours period?
No, excuse me, no. State law restricts them from 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. They cannot sell alcohol. They have to actually lock and secure the premises. And that's something that we'll inspect, as well as ABC will inspect before we issue the formal letter granting them the final approval. So, and I believe their application said they were not going to extend their hours. They're going to stay from 12:00 to 5:00. They weren't going to go any different than what they can do now.
So, the new CUP will, the restricted alcohol sale only limit from 6:00 a.m. in the morning to 2:00 a.m. following day?
The CUP, the existing CUP will limit them to 12:00. They cannot sell between 12:00 midnight and 5:00 a.m., or 6:00 a.m. what the state law says, 12 and 6. This just allows them to stay open to sell everything else but alcohol, 24 hours.
They're not changing the hours?
That's correct.
At this point?
That's correct.
They're staying the same, so it's 12:00, 12:00 midnight is the end of sale.
And actually, if I stand corrected, they're limited to sell alcohol from 7:00 a.m. to midnight. So, and that's not a proposed change as part of this application.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, would the applicant like to comment on this item?
Good evening. My name is Rick Blake. I'm an attorney. My business address is 2107 North Broadway, Santa Ana. I do represent the applicant here this evening. The application is for, just as staff has indicated, to increase the hours of sale to permit 24-hour operation. Alcohol itself will not change. It's already governed by the CUP from 7:00 a.m. to midnight. That will not change. We have locking doors on the cooler that we, at the appropriate times, lock and unlock, so it's not as if somebody can come in and we're going to end up in an argument with somebody, or they're going to grab and run. It's never been a problem under the present operation, and I think that the applicant has a good record with the police department, has not had any violations with ABC. The reason for the request is twofold. One, we have had a lot of customers that have asked, "Why are you not open all night?" or "Why are you not open later?" Because we expect a 7-Eleven to be open, plus this would be a great convenience to the community, "I'm running home, I need something," or of that kind of nature. So, it is in response to a community request. In addition to that, 7-Eleven wanting to be nationally recognized as a 24-hour operation imposes a penalty on any franchisee of 3.5% for failing to be open 24 hours. So, they receive a penalty of 3.5% of their revenue, which is already mostly taken by the Southland Corporation anyway, for not being open. So, it is both in their benefit, and that is the applicant's, and I wouldn't want to fool you in that, or try to fool you in that regard, but it's also based upon the number of requests we get, again, as to why we're not open. The conditions of approval are all acceptable. Most of them are enforced at present. There are no conditions of the existing CUP or the ones to come that I believe that were in violation of. We have a couple things to do in order to meet compliance, but otherwise, we've not had any trouble, and again, we're trying to satisfy the community. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Does the Commissioner have any question?
I do. So, on the eastern, let me make sure, yeah, the eastern elevation, under the eve, are there any lights installed under there?
You mean lights other than that come out of a sign or anything like that?
Yeah, I'm talking about, so on the, on the main street side where it's blank wall and the, maybe it's like an emergency exit or whatever that is there, are there any lights in that area?
I don't know. May I take a moment and ask the operator?
Sure.
There's some canopy lighting overhead, overhead in front of the store. On the left side, there's a sign, and there's also some streetlights.
But there's nothing in the eve that projects down?
There's a small light, a small light, nothing overhead, but there's one small light by the door.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Patricia?
I'm not sure if I could ask you or the staff, but in regards to like the condition of the graffiti being removed in 24 hours, would you make the call, or who makes the call, and who makes sure that it is removed? Do you follow up the following day?
Well, if I may just step in, generally speaking, we monitor the store every day, and if we note any graffiti, and graffiti has not been a big problem at the store to begin with, but if we note any graffiti, or any trash for that matter, anything that's laying outside, it's picked up regularly. We don't want the graffiti any more than the community wants it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay. We will now open for public, we will now open this item for public hearing. I have one card. Richard Garcia.
My name is Richard F. Garcia. Been a community leader for almost 20 years. I was presently the community leader for the Santa Ana Memorial Park Neighborhood Association until March of last year. I started a new organization called Santa Ana Business and Neighborhood Alliance of Orange County, and we've been monitoring the situation at 7-Eleven. It was brought to our attention, like Vince said, about three years ago, four years ago, and we voted yes at the time, but at the same time, we did monitor to make sure it was until 12:00. To this point, 7-Eleven has been a great community, neighborhood store. They provide a lot of positive response for the neighborhoods, and we have not had any issues whatsoever. Oswald, the manager, I've been working with him very close, and whenever there's a situation, he and his staff handles it very quickly. They don't tolerate anybody standing outside. We've been working with the mental health association for the people not to be at the store and hanging out. So, I don't have no issues regarding the situation of the 7-Eleven, and I just live right around the corner from there. With going graffiti, Oswald, again, the manager calls it in, so do I. I work with them on a daily basis. I go in there and check the parking area. And one of the most important things that he did was that during the time, he had his vendors coming in the morning during the rush hour. He did every effort to facilitate the issue regarding the trucks. So, the trucks were getting in there about 7:15 until 8:00. So, we communicated with each other, talked with each other. Now, those trucks don't come no more. Either they come at 6:00 in the morning, or when they open, or after. But I haven't had no issues regarding that 7-Eleven, and like I said, I've been a community leader for many years, and usually, I pose situations like this, I have no opposition on this issue. Any questions?
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Does anyone else from the public want to comment on item number one? Hearing none, we'll close the public comments and bring it back to the Commission. Do we have a motion to consider item number one? Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, many times I go by the site. I live on the south end of town. I go by there, and I do see graffiti on that eastern wall, and it bothers me, because, yes, I know we have a condition that talks about, "Within 24 hours, it shall be removed," but I've seen a couple times where it hasn't. That's not always the applicant's fault, but at the same time, it is a condition placed on there, and it isn't always followed. Another issue I have is the window coverage. You know, 25% is supposed to be the max, and even the picture that Vince had up on the screen shows well over 25% on there. So, thankfully, though, there is a police condition in there that requires the window displays not to exceed the 25%, so there's nothing really to add there, but what I'd like to do is, in this case, I think that it's good that there's going to be eyes on the street if this is approved. I think it's important to have that activity in the area, especially as what staff had talked about, the idea that folks in the community can go there and get necessary items, food, et cetera. So, with that, I'd like to move that we approve a resolution adopting CUP number 2018-05 with one additional condition, and that is that condition number five be added to the planning conditions to require landscaping be installed and maintained that covers the east elevation below the eve and around the door on the east elevation prior to the CUP becoming effective.
Do we have a second? Okay, any discussion? Patricia?
I just want to say that I agree with Richard. 7-Eleven is, to me, very family-friendly, I mean, community-friendly, and I take my kids for Red Ribbon Week, and I know they have like 7-Eleven free Slurpee on, you know, July 11th, then they have free coffee, so I really appreciate that. And in reading the report, I saw that within the last five years, you've been in compliance, so I appreciate that, and you know, I think a lot of businesses should, you're a great role model for that, and I would also like to support this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Lynette?
I would just like to ask the maker of the motion if he would consider, in addition to the landscaping for item number five under plan, if we would also be able to add some lighting under that eve as well? I think that might be a good deterrent from people late at night, early in the morning, maybe either sitting on the grass or congregating or so forth. If there's more lighting on that, where you can see it from the street, maybe it would deter people from...
I'd be happy to add that to the motion, yes.
Okay, so Phil accepts the felony amendment to that item? Any other comments, additions, or deletions to the item? Hearing?
I second the amended motion.
You second the amended motion? Okay, good. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Vote is six-zero, and Eric Alveretti is absent. That is the end of our business calendar this evening. We'll now move into the work-study calendar, and one request has come up. Vince, maybe we could just do a quick reversal of doing the Bristol first, and then the housing second, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
All right, so if we could do the discussion, we have two items on the work-study tonight. One has to do with the Housing 101, and the other one happens to do with the Bristol Corridor Project, some discussion on that. So if we could have that first, I'd appreciate that.
Rick?
Yes, good evening. This item here is placed on the agenda at the request of the planning commission. Just a little heads up, it's scheduled to go to the April 9th Planning Commission for recommendation to you. It needs to go to City Council for actual adoption, but you'll see this in about two weeks from tonight. So here it is, Bristol Street Amendments. We currently have a Bristol Street Plan that was approved back in 1991, and Bristol Street was multiple documents. It was a Bristol Street Environmental Impact Report, which did the study, the whole 4.6 mile, four mile, well, that's 4.6 miles, I believe, total corridor. It also covered a redevelopment plan, and it also included a land use plan, a specific plan, which was this document here that you're going to see. And again, this is approved, what, 20-something years ago, almost 26-something years ago? And part of that plan was to widen Bristol Street. It was four lanes back in the eighties, and this plan first got formulated, went from four to six lanes. It was really intended to be very auto-oriented, cars, cars, cars. Widen the streets, remove a lot of the land uses, eliminate driveways and curb cuts to slow down traffic, and just in certain areas, you'd allow some development to occur. It also had some aesthetics to it, which is all-new landscape medians, new really wide landscape parkways and sidewalks, and then also had a bike lanes, had bike lanes in there. And this was at the time consistent with our circulation element, and then we had complete streets, which is now more of a current document. So this is kind of a quick background on the project. It goes from Bristol Street to the, Warner to the south, all the way up to Memory Lane to the north. And, let's see. So why are we here? Why are you going to see the document? Well, it's simple. Some changes have occurred, mainly because of the funding mechanism for the project with OCTA, which I'll get to in a moment here, which kind of impacted the right-of-way. So when we changed this whole funding mechanism and adjusted the right-of-way, we end up with some available extra land in this plan here. So we decided, what can we do to get some additional land uses back on there, generate some revenue back for the city, and in turn dump it back into the Bristol Street project and help fund the next segments of it? There is four total phases of it. We're on phase three, Sean? Phase three right now? And the fourth phase, which is essentially 17th Street North, is unfunded. So by allowing some of this future development to occur, we'll get some funds back in the program, and hopefully we can get the rest, that last missing leg, that we'll be able to go forward. So part of the proposal here is a zone change and general plan amendment to amend some land uses that were designated for some parcels, and I'll get to that here in a moment. It also makes the document consistent with our general plan, and then we have an addendum to the EIR, which we're going to recommend approval as well. So you'll see three different actions here before you have the zone change, the general plan amendment, and then the environmental. So I was talking about the widening of the project. This is what approved, approved back in 1991, 150-foot cross-section. So if you go from First Street down to, I guess, McFadden, you'll see this type of cross-section here. You've got six lanes, nice landscape median, and then you've got about 25-foot wide parkway and sidewalks, with the Mandarin sidewalks there. And what had happened was, back about four or five years ago, OCTA said, "You know what? You're doing some Measure M funds, and we no longer allow that much right-of-way. You're allowed to have 120 feet instead of 150 feet." And we said, "Well, hold on a second, we have half of it almost built and planned out, and 120 to 150 is a big change. Will you give us 128?" And they said, "Sure, okay," and therefore that we can get funds for the next couple of phases with a smaller cross-section. So 128 plus 150 feet means there's 22 feet of extra on Bristol Street now. So that land goes back to the properties, which made some properties that maybe weren't deep enough to be developed, now you've got that extra land on them, so now we can take a look at some potential for development on some of these parcels that were going to be, could be parkland, or could be some other type of use out there. So that kind of spurred this whole plan right here, was that whole reduced cross-section. So what we have to do is modify some sections of the code, zoning general plan, to allow some additional land uses to be built. And I've got some slides at the end there that kind of go through, if you want parcel by parcel, kind of show you where some of the areas are, I'll get to those in a few minutes. But these red stripes are kind of some of the segments. There's really only about maybe a dozen properties that are going to be changed from their designation, which mostly was, again, was mostly parks or residential, over to this Bristol Street So what you need to see in the future, again, some future actions, code amendment, which is the change to the Bristol Plan that was done in 1991, and we're changing some of the text. It was written back in the eighties, where it said, "We're going to plan to do certain things." Well, we've done some of those things now, so the document's going to read to say, like, "Well, we did those things now, and now we're finishing up the plan." So it's managed to some code cleanup in the document to kind of clean up to make it current documents to read like it was written in 1991. Then you get some zone changes to a few parcels, general plan amendment, as I mentioned, and then the addendum to the EIR. So that's what you're going to be seeing here in two weeks. So let me go through here a couple of slides, and kind of show you some of the properties that we're talking about. So some of these properties here, well, the ones that are highlighted in the white boxes, so say the upper right-hand corner, it says, let's see if my, doesn't work. So you see, it says, "Change from park to residential." So some of those strips of land were so narrow that you couldn't do anything on them. Now they're wide enough, additional street right-of-way, that's just 22 feet, so now we can create some single-family parcels there, they're going to, not front on Bristol Street, but front on those side streets. So that one there's probably like, maybe Ninth or Tenth Street right there in that right-hand corner. So again, this type of little actions we're going to be doing, that we can pick up some properties and pick up some potential development. So now we have a property that's going to be used for parkland, can now be sold for residential development, that money is going to be dumped back into the plan and fund the next phase of development out there. We'll also be able to fund some of the underground utilities that we weren't be able to do on the second phase, we'll catch them in the future phases. So these are some of the properties here, and this is a slide that we took out of the neighborhoods. We've been after the neighborhoods twice in the last about two years, to kind of tell them what we're doing, then go back and remind them what we're doing here. And this is the segment there I talked about, Artisa, Pilar, and Washington Square, and Flora Park Neighborhoods there. So you can see all those properties that have the widening and are changing land use designations. Here's another slide here that's changing from park to residential, and then the bottom part says, "Add commercial option." This is Bristol Street between Civic Center and Washington, where the In-N-Out Burgers at McDonald's is at, and so those segments there, and there's some offices out there that want to remain up in that location because they service their local community. So we're able to allow them to stay in this location and rebuild their property. So you'll see some rebuilding in this phase, which is currently under construction right now. And here's a segment a little farther south, again, a lot of it there is some park to residential, right there in the center, and then to the left, "Add commercial option" right there in Bristol and Warner. The city also bought a piece of property right there on the corner of Bristol and Warner, it's vacant, you see it's vacant right now. We're going to combine that into this project site here and make it a nice viable commercial property. It was formerly a tire shop and a liquor store, and now with this, these properties, plus the Bristol Street is wide enough to do another development on it. And then here's a small little piece that we missed a while back, I believe this is the digital incubator site right there, and right near Chief McFadden and Ettinger, and this is a piece that was missing out of the plan. It's actually a parking lot for that, for that digital incubator site right now, so this is putting that piece of property back into the plan. So these are the kind of actions you're going to see. Mainly it's allowing some commercial to occur, and some parcels a little bigger, and then some parcels that we don't want to be commercial, but can be built, single-family houses, getting back into the housing stock in the city. And then here is another one here that was not in the plan, they're in the center, we're going to add to the plan, and a few more other ones are changed, those code cleanups. And then this is farther up north, again, this area here is not funded right now, so we're not sure when this is going to occur. This is north of 17th. There's a piece of property there, I believe it's 20th or 21st Street on the upper side of the upper left, where it's a small little hair salon right now, and it'll be changed over to residential. There's a couple pieces there that they're going to change from park over to a little residential in West Flora Park Neighborhood. And then this just shows through some different designs that they put in 50-foot buffer, it's just a little cleanup, still touch-ups to our current development standards. And then this is kind of shows us the area of the whole side, tells you what different phases that were to occur, and when the future phases, a little overview of that, and this will be in your packet as well next meeting. Oh, then we got some, there's about 10 of these, I won't burden you with all of these, but there's some, just some renderings, that's what it shows like right now, parts of it will be. Landscape median, center median, little corner plaza right here in this one here. Another corner plaza here, this is again 17th and Bristol. Little landscape median here, some parkway. And I believe this strip of it has some of the synthetic turf and the landscaping, which we're trying to save water, and also save some money on the whole landscaping, which, Sean, close your ears, but didn't turn out as well as we had hoped it would turn out. The public works has rethought that plan, and everything else will be natural landscaping here from now on. Right, Sean?
Yes.
Thank you. And then just some construction projects here. So right now, as you've probably seen, they're currently rebuilding Civic Center up to 17th Street. And I think that's about it. So that's just a quick overview of what's going to be coming to you in a couple of weeks. Again, we see it more in just some cleanups and touch-ups on the, on the plan, so. Can I answer any questions that you may have? And this was a very similar presentation we did to this body about two and a half years ago, so it's just taking some time to get, get started again. We actually put a hold on it for a couple of years, at the direction of City Manager, and now we're back. Because the reason we're doing this, because some of these properties up here, we want to get a broker to help us market them and sell them, so we want to get all those zoning general plan in place, so when somebody comes in, they can just pretty much start the tallying the process and go.
Patrice?
Oh, I'm not sure if I missed it in the presentation, thank you, Mr. Sherman, but my question is, do you have a completion time? Because I was in here two and a half years ago.
Completion for the working? For the entire project, and all segments?
Right.
No, because that last phase, again, 17th North is unfunded, so there's no funds to do it, so it could be, the money could come up, jump off in our hands in a year, it could be five or 10 years.
Okay.
So, no, no date.
Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the, I think it was the southwest corner of Bristol and Civic Center, and you have that shown as residential. I was just curious why, because when I look at that intersection, northwest, northeast, and southeast are all commercial.
Okay, that's a trip on 17th.
The southwest corner of that intersection.
Okay, let's take a look at my plan here. Let's go through it here. Okay, let's see.
Yeah, right there. So on the, so on this rendering, it would be on the upper right, that yellow right there. Is there a reason why we aren't proposing commercial, or at least a park with commercial option?
That is adjacent, if I recall correctly, to an apartment complex, just above it there. And we looked into selling it to them for some parking, but they didn't have an interest at the time of buying it for parking, so we have the wall kind of set up right there. So what you see at the, between the property and the yellow is going to be a solid block wall, which is the Bristol Sound Wall, it must, may be seen as you go up down the street there. So it didn't seem to be viable to be commercial at that location, given it's right there, sandwiched in between a residential apartment project.
Not viable because of the size, or?
And location also, being off the center, off the main intersection.
Because the other three corners are commercial?
They are.
So that's why I just, this would seem kind of unusual, that this one would not be commercial as well.
Yeah, we can take another look at it and see. It really depends on the size of the lot that are remaining, or lot that's left over.
Okay.
So we'll take a look, it has something for you.
And, and the other question I had was, I noticed one of the other renderings showed a 15, or, I don't know if it was 15, but it was a setback, so are you allowing folks to build up to the sidewalk, or close to the sidewalk, or are they going to have to provide parking in front?
Okay, that portion's not changing. There's two options in the plan. If you have parking next to the, next to the street, you have to have a five-foot landscape setback, and one parking planter every three stalls.
Okay.
If the building's setback and the parking's setback, that's a 15-foot setback, which is our commercial standard.
So are we allowed to, or not, would somebody be allowed to put their building close to the sidewalk?
Five feet away would be the minimum.
For the building?
Yes.
So they can put parking in the rear and put?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, I mean, to me, it just seems, you know, we are an urban city, and we're not Irvine, so for us to propose parking in front just seems like we're trying to out Irvine Irvine, and that's not, not fun.
Yeah. Again, the plan was developed in 1991, and most of it's been built with that Irvine design, parking in front, and buildings in the back, so we do allow it to be flip-flop, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Vince, at this time? Hearing none, Vince, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We look forward to seeing the final report in the near future.
Yep.
We'll now move on to the next work-study, which is Housing 101, and basically, the purpose behind this was to really kind of give a broader and more in-depth overview of housing from the standpoint of affordable housing, regular housing, and any other kinds of questions that we might have relative to the terms that have come up through our meetings. So with that, turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Daisy Perez. I'm the Housing Programs Analyst with the city. Our Housing Division Manager, Judson Brown, is also here, if you have any questions. I oversee the, all of the affordable housing developments in the city, as well as the federal funds for home, NSP, and CDBG. So just a quick overview of what I'm going to discuss today. What is affordable housing? Who needs it, and why we build it? Where is it in the city, and what does it look like? And how do we get there? How does this actually get built? So the big question, right? What is affordable housing? So it's not just inexpensive, cheap housing. Affordable housing to the city is housing that is set affordable, and what that means is residents that live there pay no more than 30% of their income towards housing. So that's the way the federal government has defined that. So if a household is paying more than 30% of their income towards housing, then they're considered, then that's an unaffordable payment for them. So one of the reasons why we have affordable housing is because the state requires us to have affordable housing. Through the housing element, every single city in the state is given a, what we call a RENA goal, or Regional Housing Needs Assessment Goal. So every year, we have to report back to the state, and this is tied to SB 35, only we'll talk about that later. So depending on our progress, now developers will have additional incentives for them. Our goal for the seven-year RENA cycle, so this is every seven years tied to the housing element, is 156 very-low income units and 122 low units. So since then, we have developed 69 very-low and 52-low. So to meet our RENA goals for the cycle, we only need 87 very-low and 70 low units. And then, as you can see with the seven projects that are currently under development, once those are completed, we'll have an additional, additional 327 very-low units and 121 low units. So we're looking really good, and we're currently scheduled to exceed our RENA goals for affordable housing.
I'd like to, if I might ask, just, just so I make sure I understand, so the 87 that's remaining, and you said for the cycle, is that for the annual cycle, or is that for the approved housing?
The seven-year, the seven-year period.
So our, so we're essentially, we need 156 very-low, and right now, we're on course to get to 327, so we're exceeding what was imposed on us by the state?
Right. So we've already done, or already built 69 of those, and we only need 87, and we're, we're currently scheduled to do 327, so we're going to far exceed our very-low income goal.
For what the state is asking us?
For what the state is asking, correct.
Okay.
But as you can see, even though that, those are the numbers set by the state, 64% of the renters in the city are paying more than 30% of their income on housing. And of those 64%, 31% are paying more than half of their income on housing. So even though the state has their requirements, and it's really hard for them to get down to specifics, because they need to set these goals for every single city, looking at this data, we know the city best, and we know that there's much more need for affordable housing, especially given this data. Looking at this data, we know the city best, and we know that there's much more need for affordable housing, especially given this data. And then, as you can see, since 2010, rents have gone up, on average, about 10% when income has only, or has actually decreased. So the problem's only getting worse, and rents are becoming even more unaffordable. This is the chart from the American Community Survey from the median household income for Santa Ana. And as you can see, the median household income, on average, is $54,062. And the income limits that are set for these projects are set based on the Orange County median household income, which is $88,000. So overall, we're much lower than the county. And as a result, much more of our residents qualify for these units. So how much do you actually have to make to qualify for these? So you'll hear developers talking about, and council talk about, oh, these AMIs, right? Well, what does that mean? So the AMI is the area median income for a specific area. So as I just mentioned, the area median income for the county is $88,000. So all of those AMIs are set based on that $88,000 number. And that's for a family of four. So at 30% AMI, a household of four that makes $31,300 or below is considered extremely low income. On the flip side, you have a family of four that makes $105,600 or below, and they would be still considered moderate income. So even though they're over $100,000, they would still qualify to potentially live in a moderate-income-priced unit. And then, as I previously mentioned, the federal government sets that limit where if you're paying more than 30% or no more than 30% of your total household income towards rent that's affordable, all of the projects that we have where we provide funding for these projects, the tenants pay no more than 30% of their income towards housing. So there's a range, as you can see there. So that depends on how much the household actually makes. For a lot of the projects, there's a minimum that they have to make in order to be able to provide that payment. But there's also a maximum. So the maximum is based on the total household size and then the amount of bedrooms per unit. Okay, so you might be wondering where we have affordable housing in the city. So as you can see on this map, affordable housing is located everywhere throughout the city, not just near downtown. I can zoom into a particular area if you'd like to see. A little better of a picture. Sorry about the ads. So we have projects scattered all the way throughout. All the newer projects are in either red or orange. And the projects that were built, there were several projects built from 2004 to 2007. Those are yellow. And then there's quite a few projects that were rehabbed and converted to affordable in the 2000s, early 2000s, and those you'll see in green. But overall, the city has contributed funding towards the development or rehabilitation of approximately 1,500 units throughout the city. So you might also be wondering, well, what does affordable housing look like? It comes in all different shapes and sizes. If you drive past near the train station, you'll see some historic homes. Those are actually affordable homes. They were rehabbed and they're beautiful. There's one right there on the right-hand side. It's a single-family home. There's also some townhomes. There's other projects where developers have converted dilapidated motels into housing, as well as housing that's built on-site. So this project here is on Harbor Boulevard. It's a City Ventures project. And the developer actually built 15% of these units as affordable to meet their requirements from the Housing Opportunity Ordinance, which Ali will talk about. So who builds this? As you just saw on that previous slide, there's for-profit developers that build affordable housing on-site as part of their market rate projects to satisfy the WHO. But for the most part, we see nonprofit developers that provide 100% or close to 100% affordable projects. In order to keep the rents low and be able to charge affordable rents, nonprofit developers get funding from both the public side, so they'll ask the city for money. They'll ask the State of California through this, we call it TCAC, California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, for tax credits. And then they also get private loans. The lower they charge for rents, obviously, the less they'll be able to pay in their monthly private loan. So they'll request more money from us, from the city, and they'll also request more from the state. The nine, there's 4% tax credits and 9% tax credits. The 9% tax credits have a much higher value, but they're much harder to qualify for. So you, developers have to compete with projects all throughout the state, and they can only do this twice a year. So they'll either submit in the first round in February or the second round in July. And in order for them to even submit their application for these 9% tax credits, the project has to be fully entitled, including CEQA, and it has to be fully financed. So they have to be able to show the state that they can pay for it and that you've approved it, and that all they need is these tax credits and they're ready to go, and they're ready to build. The 4%, it's a little more lenient. They're not very competitive. It's over-the-counter application. They can submit nine times a year. The project doesn't have to be fully financed yet. All it requires is a zoning verification. And if they don't receive that in one month, and they can always reapply at the next month. And when they receive the 4%, they have six months in order to complete the rest of their process. And if they miss that deadline, they can always reapply. So this is an example of a affordable housing project that was recently completed. So this project is on Harbor Boulevard. It's the Andalusia Project. And as you can see, most of these units, they're all three bedrooms, are considered low income, or they're set at that 60% AMI level. But there's also a couple very low-income units and the moderate income. And as you can see, there's the maximum rents here. So every year, the Housing Division works with a private firm, a financial analyst, that looks at the levels, the income levels set by HUD, and they'll analyze to figure out what's the most that these households will be able to pay. And then we send out a letter to them saying, this is the most that you can charge for these units. So as you can see, for the 110% AMI, for a three-bedroom, that can go up to $2,500, $2,517, which is actually above the actual market rate for this area. So the developer doesn't charge them $2,500. They charge the market rate, about $2,000. But the benefit to doing it as, and setting it at that 110% level is we can still count it on our arena goals for our moderate category. So instead of it being market rate, we're still considered a moderate-income unit, even though they pay market rate there. And this is another project, which is scheduled to be completed next month. So the developer was able to qualify for the 9% tax credit. So as a result, you'll see that the income levels here are much lower. There's quite a few at 30%, 40%, and these only go up to 60% AMI, and they're both 69 units. So once these projects are built, we don't forget about them. So the city provides funding for these projects, and as a result, we make sure that they're monitored every year. So we'll get the rent rolls. We'll look at, make sure all of these tenants are being recertified, that they still qualify, and that the developer isn't charging them more rent than they can. And then also, we have a staff member that goes out to these projects every one to three years, depending on the size of the project. So the bigger the project, the more often they're there. And they check 20% of the units. It's a random sample, but they'll go in. They'll check to make sure all the faucets work, that nothing's loose, that all of their property standards are being met. And if they're not, then the developer gets notified that they need to correct these deficiencies, and then they're re-inspected to make sure that they're brought up to code. And if they're not, then that triggers repayment, and they have to pay back our loans. And then another form of affordable housing is commonly known as Section 8, or tenant-based rental assistance. So how that works is a family finds a unit that they would like to rent in the private market. So these, these aren't necessarily projects that we work with developers to build. And they work with the Housing Authority to qualify. So typically, they have to be below 50% AMI or below to qualify. And they'll find a market rate unit, if the developer or the landlord accepts the voucher. They will pay up to 30% of their rent. So let's say the unit is $1,500, that's the rent. And they can, 30% of their income is 500, then the Housing Authority will pay the rest, and they'll pay the extra $1,000 so that the landlord still gets the market rate rent for that project, for that unit. And then Ali's going to talk about the planning side, how the developers make these projects work. Thank you.
Actually, I have one quick question. As far as the Section 8 vouchers, so if I'm a developer and I'm building my units, I've got the 15% requirement, and I know Ali's going to get more into the zoning planning aspect, but as a city, have we ever talked about satisfying that requirement with something that would allow folks to use vouchers in some of these units, instead of some sort of covenant, requiring it to be low or very low? Because it seems like the Section 8 vouchers provide a little more flexibility. Is that something that we would ever consider?
I'm not sure if that's been discussed. The issue with the Section 8 vouchers is that they're very limited, and we have an extremely long waitlist there. And the, those vouchers are specific to that tenant. So if you have a voucher, you can go and you can try to find housing anywhere. There's another type of voucher, and that is specific to that unit. And so we do fund certain projects with those, those types of vouchers. And so that unit will always be affordable, and the developer will technically get the market rate, but the tenant pays no more than 30%.
And with the Section 8, that's not something that we, as a city, are paying for. It's really, you guys are managing federal funds, correct?
Right. And the other, so the, these are tenant-based vouchers, and the other ones are project-based vouchers. So the project-based vouchers are specific to the unit, and the tenant-based voucher, that's you as a tenant. You can go and look for a property anywhere.
Thank you.
Patrice?
Yes, from the Orange County Housing Authority, because you know, there's different housing authorities. There's ANI, San Ana, Gardner Grove, and then there's Orange County Housing Authority. Under San Ana, there's a list of affordable housing, like are these some that are going to be on that list, or are these the individual voucher units that are on there? Do you know which ones are on that particular list under San Ana?
So the ones that are on our affordable housing list, those have covenants attached. We, those are the ones that we're making sure that the properties are maintaining those as affordable. If you have a Section 8 voucher, you can live at any, it can be an affordable project. It can be one of those on the list. But it can also be a market rate project, as long as the landlord says, yes, I'll take it. They know, as long as, you know, the rent is reasonable, and they're not just raising the rent to get even more from the Housing Authority, they can, they can live anywhere in the city or in the county, depending on the, if they have an Orange County voucher. It doesn't have to be an affordable housing project.
Okay. And do I need to talk to you about how these people get pulled? I mean, I don't want to spend the rest of the the time here, because I have a lot of questions. Housing is of my interests, and I used to work on housing issues when I worked for the state. And what I want to know is, for example, the depot at when, yes, in Santiago, when I asked one of the developers, you know, so is this going to be available for those on the list? That, as you said, there's a really extensive list. In fact, I was on the list, but I never got notified of that new project. So my question is, you know, how do you get in there or notified? Because from what Barry Cottle told me, they're all taken already, you know? So that's what I'm interested in, in learning about the the process of how people get selected into these new housing projects. So maybe, if you can provide me with your, it was really hard for me to see the slides, but if we can get this PowerPoint, and also if I can get your information, so maybe we can meet and talk about some of those things.
Yeah, but just a quick point. So there is that waiting list for a Section 8 voucher. But each of these projects that I, like the ones I just mentioned that are 100% affordable, so the developer has their own waitlist for each project. So for the depot at Santiago, they have about 1,700 people that are on the waitlist, and that's specific to that project. So if a household in the city is looking to move into one of those 100% affordable projects, they would contact the developer directly to get on that list. And so on our website, we have all of the affordable housing units in the city, and their contact information is for the developer or their property management company. So they'll work directly with them.
Mr. Chair?
I've got a couple questions. Number one, could you possibly provide to us the copy of your slide presentation you just showed?
Absolutely.
Because not in our package.
I'll have to email it out to everybody tomorrow morning. You'll all get a copy in your mailbox. Absolutely.
You mentioned about area median income, 30% of AMI would qualify for the, you know, for the affordable housing. I just took the very quick calculation. You say you've mentioned about $88,000 a year, family of four, and you, 30% of that equate to about $30,000. So roughly about $2,500 a month would allow for qualify under affordable housing. So what is monthly rent would allow by Section 8 for, say, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, or four-bedroom housing unit in San Ana?
So for Section 8, it's whatever's the market rate for that area. So if there's a, somewhere where their project may be a two-bedroom is $2,000, and they can only afford maybe $1,000 a month, then if you have a Section 8 voucher, the Housing Authority will pay the other $1,000, so that the landlord gets the $2,000 a month.
So no maximum allowance for, you know, for Section 8 under two-bedrooms, really, for example, like two-bedroom would qualify, maximum, the California, you know, San Ana Housing Department will willing to pay, say, $2,000, and, you know, three-bedroom, $2,500, and four-bedroom for $3,000, for example. You don't, so you have, you don't have a cap on it what the maximum the San Ana Housing Authority would willing to pay?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. When our, the maximum rents that our Housing Authority is able to pay for our Section 8 voucher holders is based on the fair market rents that are published by HUD on an annual basis? You asked about the two-bedroom and three-bedroom and four-bedroom fair market rents, which in, for the Section 8 program, we call it payment standards or payment maximums, rent maximums. The, I don't know them off the top of my head, but I'd be glad to provide that to Mr. Fregoso, and he could send that to you tomorrow morning.
Yeah, the reason why, because I'm bringing that question, because I think that we are recognized with the major housing storage in our, in Orange County, specifically in San Ana. And, and for that, the house, the rent could be, you know, very high compared to the other county surrounding the Orange County, like they say Riverside compared to Orange County. Rent, big difference. And, and there's always, you know, there's a limit. And say, if $2,500 were with under, they call AMI, I could rent easily, rent a big home in Riverside. But in San Ana, or anyway, in Orange County, probably maybe two-bedroom or the most three-bedroom home. And that's just my question. But the thing, the one thing I do, could you tell me, the state, SB 35, then it would allow affordable, any project development under, under, affordable housing would limit to 0.5 parking space per unit, did not specifically say two-bedroom, three-bedroom, bedroom, or three-bedroom unit at all. So, so my, my personal concern is that if we continue to allow the affordable housing development would be on it, so it would be, you know, would be a lot of impact on the resident around any of those affordable housing projects.
Right.
Commissioner Ali has a little bit of that topic on his presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one last question, and that is, are there, so we know that Section 8 vouchers are provided from federal funding. Are there any state-funded vouchers that San Ana receives?
The state doesn't provide any vouchers, but the state does have different types of funding sources to fund a lot of these affordable housing developments. So one of those, yes, the construction, and then So one of those, yes, the construction, and then through like the cap and trade funds, the state provides funding not only for the development, but for off-site improvements. So you just saw a couple months ago, I think Tiny Tim Plaza and the Santa Ana Arts Collective. So the Santa Ana Arts Collective and the depot, they receive funding for the construction, but they also are doing off-site improvements, and those are paid for by the state. And Tiny Tim actually just submitted their application for those state funds, but they're not being passed down to the tenant directly for housing. But they are doing some type, transportation-type improvements. So one of those requirements, at least in the round that Tiny Tim applied for, if they receive funding, then through that program, they have to provide transit passes for all of those residents for at least three years. So they're encouraging, you know, reduction of greenhouse gases, alternative transportation methods. They have different funding principles, but they, they also are aware that affordable housing is a huge need, and so they're providing funding so that we can at least build those units. And then they set lower AMI levels, so they're making the project even more affordable and setting those rents even lower.
And do we see any increase in the federal amount of Section 8 vouchers coming to Santa Ana?
We just were notified last week, we don't have the final numbers yet, but based on the federal funding that we receive, we are looking at an increase anywhere from five to 10% for a lot of the different programs that we have, and then we're estimated for our home program.
Just, just the Section 8 vouchers, not the whole spectrum. I'm just curious about the vouchers. So how, how many, how much of an increase are we expected to see?
Well, so under our contract with HUD, we're, we have something called an annual contributions contract. It's our contract with HUD that, that allows us to assist up to 2,699 voucher holders with the funding that we receive. As Daisy was mentioning, that, that funding fluctuates year to year. It has been, you know, decreasing, but, you know, through the omnibus bill that was passed last Thursday, we are expecting an increase this, this coming year. But in terms of, in terms of increases in vouchers that we've received from the federal government, last year, we applied for something called HUD-VAS vouchers to try and get more funding for our local community, and we received an award of 75 HUD-VAS project-based vouchers. So that's going to increase our, our contract with HUD by, so to 2,774 units. And then about three weeks ago, we were also notified that we are going to receive an additional award of 100 HUD-VAS vouchers again. And so that'll increase our contract with HUD to 2,874 authorized voucher holders. So we've been, every opportunity we have to, to secure and apply for additional vouchers, we've been going for. But we are very much constrained by the, by the amount of funding that we're receiving from HUD through the federal appropriations process.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions to Daisy? Daisy, thank you very much, good job.
Thank you.
Ali?
So part two is how do we get there? There's more to getting there than just filling out some applications and looking at some plans. I personally am a huge planning nerd, and how we get there is pretty much everyone in this room. Whether you're making decisions, or you're reviewing plans, or you just have an interest in planning or in the audience, we're all a part of that conversation that we're having tonight. So we get there by having a solid foundation of what Daisy shared with us tonight, and then taking it a step further and actually implementing it. There's various laws, both at the state and local level, that help us get there. And the first I'm going to talk to you tonight about is the density bonus law, which is at the state. Then we have a local inclusionary housing ordinance, which is the Housing Opportunity Ordinance, or the WHO. And then finally, other relevant laws that have sprung up very recently. So the first is the state's density bonus law. This is a law that the state gives developers the right to build some extra units on a project site in exchange for basically locking them in for a certain period of affordability. And that affordability is usually 55 years, some can be in perpetuity, but most of the time it's 55 years, rental, sometimes ownership as well. And you get to build extra units. Now, that amount of extra is called the density bonus, and it's a percent of the baseline density. Can be up to 35% extra units, depends on various factors, like who's going to live there, whether it's seniors or families, and also the level of affordability, if it's very low income or moderate income and all that. The agreement itself that locks these units into affordability is taken to city council. So density bonus, or we sometimes just colloquially call them DBAs, the developer can also seek relief from development standards. So let's say they really want to build that extra 35% density. So they normally can build 100 units, and they say, you know what, I'll give the city 135 units, but it's going to be kind of hard for me to do that on this site. It's a little bit tight, so I need some relief from certain things. Those certain things are called development standards. They include, but are not limited to, the most common ones like setbacks, open space standards, height, density, and all that. A jurisdiction, like let's say Santa Ana, if we really want to make a project happen, we can offer up to three, what are called incentives. So we can sit there and say, well, okay, we'll allow you to have a reduction in setbacks, or we'll allow you to go a little bit taller. When a developer requests those from the city, they're called concessions. So the state says the city can offer up to three incentives, but through recent changes to the law, as of today, basically, a developer can request an unlimited number of concessions. So they can come and say, you know what, I can't pull this off, I need you to reduce my open space, allow me to go taller, have reduced setbacks, reduce parking, all those certain things. Now, it sounds like it puts us in a bind, but what jurisdictions can do is have a study done that proves that the concessions are going to be a detriment to public health and safety. So if we get, go ahead.
So Ali, so this, because I've always known as the three concessions, right? So is that now just irrelevant? Now it's just the unlimited per the study?
It's the three incentives, and then it does not have a cap on the number of concessions.
So we can offer three, but they can ask for more?
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
So good. Now that that's sunk in a little bit, basically, we can move on to the next level, which is the Housing Opportunity Ordinance. Now, this is our local inclusionary housing law. Basically says that in Santa Ana, you have options to build affordable housing, and it's going to be required if you do certain things. Number one is if you're requesting an upzoning, so let's say you identify a site, and it's currently zoned commercial, and you want to rezone it to something residential, that's an upzoning. So as a result, the WHO kicks in. Secondly, if you're in an area that the city has predetermined to be upzoned, like let's say the Harbor Plan area, then this, any project of over five units in that area automatically has to provide affordability in affordable units. And just to reiterate, it's not for projects of less than five units, it's five or more. And your options basically are to provide onsite affordable housing. So Daisy shared two projects by City Ventures on Harbor that are actually building units as part of their mixed-income community. You can pay in-lu funds into a giant pot that then city then allocates to developers through the work that Daisy and Justin do together. And then also, less commonly, but it has been done, rehabilitation or construction of offsite units. So some of us may be familiar with CNC development. They've done affordable projects in Santa Ana. A couple of years ago, they acquired a structure on Mini Street and rehabbed it, and, you know, do all that. So that's also an option.
Ali, so as far as how developers are providing the units, or I'm sorry, satisfying the Housing Opportunity Ordinance, rough percentages, what would you say, how many, how much are we seeing the actual onsite units being provided versus folks doing the in-lu fees?
Why don't we have Justin and Daisy answer that? We can answer it now or maybe at the end.
So when the WHO was originally written, it allowed developers to provide onsite affordable housing at the low or the moderate level. And most of the developers were able to pencil out the units at the moderate level. So you saw the City Ventures project, there was a Magnolia Homes project, those have the 50% unit. Since then, council has changed the ordinance, and if a developer wants to do the onsite housing, they have to do it at the low level. So since, since that change, we haven't seen any project come through where the developer has chosen to build onsite, they've all paid or chosen to pay the in-lu fee.
And that change, if I remember, I was on the commission at the time, this is what, two years ago now, or a year and a half?
Right when Hassan first started, he brought up the change of 2015, summer 2015.
Summer 2015, and we've had none since then.
Correct.
We're probably 80% pay the fee, and maybe 20% units.
Yeah, but since that change, we haven't seen any, any choose to do the units, they've all just paid out.
So the moderate option was removed during the time that we did those revisions back in 2015?
Yes, and we'll be back, we'll be before you or later on this year with some potential changes to the ordinance.
In regards to what?
Everything. Part of the ordinance requires us to go back and pre-take a look at it after a couple of years, so we'll be back here talking about some options for changing it.
And when would that be?
It was, we have to be back between July and December.
Between July and December?
Yep. We have to be at council by the end of the year, so we'll come to you before then.
Okay.
Probably later in December.
All right. So now that we have an ordinance on the books that requires onsite or in-lu funds or whatnot, basically, if you want to do onsite units, our ordinance also has incentives to help you realize that goal. So you can get an additional density bonus of up to 35%, and that's in addition to what the state allows, so we refer to it here as the double density. And then it also provides relief from the required parking setbacks or height. So again, if a developer came to us and said, Santa Ana, you know, you're making me provide onsite housing, I need some help here because the site is too tight or whatnot, then our own law says you can do these things in addition to the state. If you do provide the units or you pay a fee, you have to have an inclusionary housing plan. Some of the agreements are as simple as saying you're going to pay X number of dollars for the in-lu. And some of the agreements are more complex because they actually have to have provisions for maintaining and having onsite units. But again, those go to council as well. To reiterate, when you take the cumulative effects of our state's density bonus laws and the local density bonus laws, you do have a double density. So we have seen that this group back in September approved the AMG project at 2222 East First Street. That one had a base density and added 35% from the state and 35% from the local, and arrived at its unit count of 418 units. So that's how these two play together. It's not cumulative, so it's not 35 of 35, it's literally just 70% if you want to view it in that term. In this image, this is a project that's soon to be under construction. This is the AmCal project on East First Street. We might be familiar with the Holiday Inn Express building that's under renovation right now, so just down the street, there's a four-story former social security office building, it's going to get turned down, torn down and turned into onsite affordable units. So other relevant laws that have popped up recently, basically the two most pertinent have to do with parking and streamlining reviews. The first one, to address Commissioner Wynn's points, have to do with projects located near public transit. So in this case, there's a new law on the books that basically says if your project is a certain type of project, and it's located near certain types of transit, then you get to provide reduced parking onsite, as low as 0.3 units per, I'm sorry, 0.3 parking spaces per unit. So an administrative project that was approved, a ministerial one, by Jamboree Housing called the Santa Ana Veterans Village on East First Street was recently approved, and that one provides parking at that rate pursuant to the new state law because it is for homeless, I believe, was it veterans with disabilities? All right, thank you. And that one has 0.3 parking spaces because they figured it's such a unique, specific group that's so likely to not own a vehicle, and it's near public transit, that 0.3 parking spaces would be enough, and that's the state's determination. In other cases, like the senior project that I was sharing at 2222 East First Street, that one applies because it's a senior project, first category, and secondly, it's located on a bus line that has service intervals that are determined to be frequent enough to meet their parking demands. So in that case, it's on First Street, every 15 minutes, an express route bus rolls down the street. It's also at Tustin Avenue, so there's another bus line going nearby. So the state identified that as being a, quote, "major transit hub," and said, "half a parking space per unit is sufficient." So you can see how different types of projects, different users, and different transit facilities all kind of inform how the state treats the parking requirements. Finally, a recent one, SB 35, this is streamlined housing construction review. Basically, if a jurisdiction is determined to not be meeting its RENA goals and targets, as Daisy was outlining earlier, then the state punishes you in two ways. Number one, it says you have to streamline projects by no longer requiring Planning Commission or City Council review. That is, for some, the dun-dun-dun moment. For others, it's the removing the CEQA component. So basically, the state also says that those projects in those jurisdictions no longer have to abide by CEQA regulations and all that. So for some people, that's a big hurrah, but in other jurisdictions that use CEQA as a means of, not necessarily stymieing a review, but using it as a hook, as a thorough review component, that ability is taken away. So these are the local and state-level factors that go into how do we get there. Of course, projects do go through a staff-level review, after which some of them require Planning Commission and City Council action, and others are ministerial. The Harbor Plan is a good example of an area of the city that allows housing to be built by right without any sort of action by this body. And other areas do require either a site plan review or a full-blown recommendation to the city council for environmental and a zone change and all that, like AmCal and Tiny Tim and all those recently. So that's the how do we get there? Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Phil?
I just want to thank you and staff for putting together this presentation. I think you guys are thorough, and I think that really kind of put it at a good level. I hope my colleagues saw the value in it. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Sophia?
I completely agree with you and with Bee's request about having the PowerPoint. And I think also, we've had other work-study sessions where I wish I had the PowerPoint so I can take notes. So I don't know if that's just something we can, you know, create to be customary that we get the, so that we can follow along and take notes, that would be really helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your, your work-study session, and it gave me a lot of information that I really needed to be able to make effective decision, and it might be my duty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Ali, thank you, Justin, and thank you, Daisy. Good job. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, we'll close our work-study session for this evening and move on to comments, staff comments at this time?
We had promised you an update on the, on the South Main Street activities surrounding MHA, the MHA use, and I'd like to provide you with notification that the city has developed a multidisciplinary task force that includes representatives from Public Works, from PBA, of course, including code enforcement, as well as planning, and the police department. And we are starting to meet on it, but today, we did, our code enforcement department did, agency did cite the use for various violations, and they will be, and I wanted to let you know that. And part of them may include a conditional use permit if they, if they wish to continue in that location, so.
So two questions. One, what were the violations? And then second, it sounds like it's kind of like a maybe, maybe not about the CUP. Are they conducting a use that requires a CUP?
They are conducting a use that requires a CUP.
So I'm assuming then they should be stopped until they obtain the CUP?
They are, they have been, received their first notice of violation. So that is, that is up to them to take the next step. They also have some maintenance issues with parking spaces, as well as landscape maintenance. They did some work without permits, and they have some sign issues as well.
So what specifically would require them to get a CUP? Is it, which, I guess, what use are they being classified as that would trigger the CUP requirement?
They are being classified as a counseling facility that is a nonprofit or government-subsidized organization. And they- And they, according to their websites and discussions with the operators of the facility, they are providing counseling services to homeless individuals with mental health issues.
And so, they were, you said they were cited today then, correct?
Yes.
And how long do they have to submit application?
They have, actually, they have thirty
Thirty days.
Thirty days to submit the application, to rectify their condition. So, submitting the application would be one. So, we'll be working with them on that moving forward.
And to address one of your comments is, we typically don't make them shut down. Our attorney's office, as prefers, that we cite them, work with them, get them in the process, and then once the CUP is either approved or denied, then at that time, we'll decide if we got to go further and start citing them for illegal operator or not. But we typically have not said shut down until you get the CUP.
So, in the meantime, they're operating illegally?
They are.
Okay.
And we'll continue to monitor, as Canada mentioned there, with all those different task forces involved.
And that's, that's our typical
Correct.
That's how we typically enforce the code. So, we are treating them exactly the same as we would treat another use, so.
Anyone else question? Ken?
I just have a comment that three of us are new playing commissioner. I'm wondering when the next playing commissioner academy will be available for us. I don't know with the other two commissioners. I am very much would like to attend those academy. I know that one coming up in April, but I think it's too late to register it now.
Yes, and that one was actually up in Northern California, and our budget was pretty restricted this year to send you. So, it rotates every year. Next year will be in Los Angeles, and it will definitely get you plenty of notice to go to that. It'd be a great training tool for you, so.
Thank you.
Any other staff comments at this time? Vince?
No, sir.
No? Okay. With that, we'll go to commissioner comments and start with Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to compliment Vince and Selena for their presentation before the BIA this recently. I know I had to duck out the very end, but, yeah, you guys did a great job. I was proud, just sitting in the audience, watching everybody, just get excited about what we're doing here in Santa Ana, and you guys did a great job. I know you guys are kind of one-two punch in the presentation, so I just want to say you guys did a great job, and thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Cynthia? Beatrice?
I have a suggestion. I know that you guys did a wonderful job with adding these grids, like, you know, tables to, so we can visually see these reports. I was wondering, because we always have questions about like crime and incident reports in our city, and we know, I mean, having witnessed in Santa Ana for so long, there's crime. Is there any way we can get some graphs, like in a form of a skew bar or maybe just a, just a regular graph, to tell us within the last maybe three years what has been occurring within that grid? Because I really like what you guys put here where it says, and I'm just going to read the last of the sentences, which indicates that police-related activity to the site is trending down. It's the first time I see something like this, so I thought if we can visually see these trends, I think it will help us, you know, make a better and sound decision. Just a suggestion.
Sure. Let me speak with Officer McGovern and see what technologies we have available for it. I'll get back to you by next meeting.
Thank you.
Ken?
I have a comment. Actually, the, I brought this issue up with the deputy city manager back then, Mark McLoughlin, regarding to Vietnamese translation on the planning department website. The Vietnamese translation is terrible. I mean, I hate to use that word, but it is terrible. For example, translated the title, city manager as the chairman of the city council, for example, in the Vietnamese. I have brought up lengthy the document regarding to the Harbor corridor, you know, the odd that in Vietnamese is, is pretty badly translate into Vietnamese. Probably somebody put the Google Translate or something. I, I wish if you should have those, because this brought up, brought to me by the resident of Santa Ana, Vietnamese American resident of Santa Ana, and they said, well, you didn't play the commission, why don't you have it corrected? You should be, you should know better. But anyway, just want to put on the record that I think if those incorrect translations should be taken down.
Okay. I'll catch you after the meeting and find out more specifics, and then I can direct it to the proper person, maybe the clerk's office that we talked to. But if you have any comments about our agenda, we have a little bit in Vietnamese here, you know, if it's poorly translated, please let me know so I can take care of it. We do have someone on staff, not planning staff, someone in city hall that does our translation for us, so.
He can do the Vietnamese, I'll do the Spanish.
Perfect.
Anything else, Ken? Okay. I think to go on Beatrice's point, I'd just like to bring out the fact that about two years ago, we had a presentation by Graminsky, who did an overview of the city and all the grids and compare, comparing grid to grid. And we had, this, that was done, I believe, on the basis of 2015, and we asked to have 2016 brought to us, and that was over two years ago, and we were told that it was going to come to us, but it was delayed. So, I think at this point in time, can we go back, since we haven't had one since 2015? Can we go back and look at doing that in the next three to six months, practical side of that?
Sure. I'll talk to Commander Graminsky and see what we can do. I got to go back and find out what your, you want another presentation by Commander Graminsky or just some information provided to you?
We didn't, I mean, we didn't ask for the presentation to happen. It was more or less, you gave us a report, you gave us the data, and if we could get the update to that data so we could compare what we were given, you know, back two years ago versus where we are today, to make some comparisons, I mean, that would be fine. I mean, we don't need to have a dog and pony show with, you know, everything. We can just look at the data and have the data. And then if, as Beatrice pointed out, if you have a particular CUP or something coming up on the planning side of it, we can take a look at that, where it's located, and you got the data that's sitting there that you can determine, has it gotten worse or better or anything like that?
Sure. I'll get that information for you. And if you want, Graminsky's a follow-up, we can always schedule him for discussion.
Sorry, can I add to that? And I was, I'm not too concerned, but in one of the last CUPs we voted on, I don't remember the name of the officer, I'm sorry, the one that comes here?
McGovern.
He didn't have the data for last year. He had it for the previous year. So, I think it's always important to have that update because we make decisions based on that, and I think he was talking about 2016, and he said the next one was going to be ready, I think, in two months. But, you know, we can have an update, I think it'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Having said that, I have nothing else with that. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us this evening.